Another day, another digital transformation failure. That's what we're going to talk about here today in our live discussion about digital transformation. We're going to talk about lessons from ERP implementation failures. My name is Eric Kimberling. I'm the CEO of Third Stage Consulting. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, depending on where you're joining from today. We're an independent consulting firm that helps clients throughout the world with their digital transformation journeys. And this is our weekly live podcast interview that we do every Tuesday, same time, same place. We stream to YouTube, LinkedIn, Tik Tok, Twitter X and Facebook. And thank you for being here today. We are going to discuss lessons from ERP implementation failures today. Before I introduce our guest, though, just a couple of logistical items. One is, this is a live podcast interview that becomes part of the Transformation Ground Control Podcast. So if you're not already a subscriber, or if you don't listen to that podcast, be sure to check it out. You can go to transformationgroundcontrol.com to see all the past episodes and keep up with upcoming episodes as well. And so by being here today, you're part of the live production of that podcast. So what we do is we edit this after the fact, we add some more content to it, and then we release the formal official Transformation Ground Control Podcast episode. And then secondly, we're going to take audience questions here today. So any questions you have about ERP implementation failure, please chime in, ask the questions, drop your comments in there. We're going to keep an eye on all the streams across all the platforms we're streaming here today. And speaking of the stream in the chat, if you don't mind just dropping in the chat where you're joining from today, what city and country are you joining from? We're going to talk about a few different global case studies here today that affect all parts of the world. So love to hear where you're joining from today and where this global community is joining from. So just drop in the chat, if you don't mind, what city and country you're joining from? I'm joining from Denver, Colorado in the US. So thanks for being here. And then that, that does it for the preamble here. So today's topic again, lessons from ERP implementation failure and joining us today is Senior Director at Third Stage Consulting, Dr. Scott Jenke. Scott, thanks for being here today.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. And this is, this is a fun conversation. This is always one of those conversations where you could view it as a really negative kind of a buzzkill sort of a conversation. Or I could view it as a, hey, let's, let's take some lessons here from, from these failures that we see in the marketplace. But before we jump into that, tell us a little bit about yourself and your, your background. And then I'm going to ask you a little bit about what you do here at Third Stage.
Sure, sure. Usually start off with longtime consultant. I, after graduate school, I got into consulting pretty early and been either in a consulting role with some of the big four and some boutique firms as well, or in some operational roles. So I've been a T O O and VP of Operations as well. So when we engage with clients, I can, I can put myself in their seat of some of the challenges and, and issues that they go through when they look at large system selections and implementations. I have spent some time in academia as well. Been a professor at UT Dallas, running a master's program and speaking on the, the topics of operation management and project management. So it translates quite well into what we do here at Third Stage.
Yeah, you have such a unique background. I don't, I don't know that I know anyone that has that triangulation of industry consulting academia. You kind of have it all, all, all the angles covered there, which is super interesting. So tell us about, you oversee our expert witness practice here at Third Stage Consulting. Maybe tell us a little bit about, first of all, what is an expert witness for those that may not know? And what does that entail as far as overseeing that practice?
Well, I guess good for us, but bad for the industry is that when some of these ERP implementations go off the rails or even post-go-live, they don't perform as, as planned. Litigation typically gets involved. And so when attorneys are, are clashing with each other as opposing counsel, they typically reach out to firms like us and seek out experts that are knowledgeable about the industry, knowledgeable about what are successful and unsuccessful implementations and hire us to engage and look at essentially all the breadcrumbs of the project and try and decipher, not necessarily who's in, who's at fault, but more about what are all the challenges and problems that have shown themselves throughout the, the project? That didn't stop the project or didn't pause the project. The project just kept going and ultimately failed. So we come in and look at those breadcrumbs and try and piece together where we think essentially that the train went off the rails and, and the client ultimately was on the hook to pay fees or challenges in the business operation.
Yeah, yeah, very interesting. And we're gonna, we're gonna actually dive into three specific failure case studies here today. We're going to talk about Spar Group, which is a South African retailer. We're going to talk about Birmingham City Council in the UK. And we're going to talk about Little, which is a grocery retailer in Germany. We're going to kind of dive into each of those three case studies. And this is public information that we're sharing in these three specific examples. These are not clients of Third Stage Consulting, just to be clear. Cause usually, quite frankly, we can't talk about the cases we're involved with. So we have to pick these public facing ones that we're not involved with to be able to discuss them in any sort of detail. But before we get into those specific case studies, you know, we're going to come back after the fact. We'll come back and talk about what some of the general lessons are and that sort of thing from those three case studies. But if, just to start, you know, if we forget those three case studies for a moment and just look at all the failures that you've seen either as an expert witness and/or helping with project recovery. That's another part of what we do is helping get these projects back on track that have gone off the rails. But before we dive into the case studies, what are some of the general themes you see or general factors you've identified that most contribute to ERP implementation failures?
Yeah, I came up with this, this saying, it's, it's, it's been around for a long time, but it actually sums up quite a bit is the, the concept of measure twice, cut once. And I think what we see in a lot of these expert witness cases or assessment cases for projects that are in flight now that are having challenges is that the, the organization itself, either under the pressure of a software vendor or from their board or executive team to move forward into a massive ERP selection implementation sooner than they should. And when we look at projects midstream, or if we get called in after the fact, after something's gone live and, and has failed, we, we tend to see most of the challenges, the bulk of them upfront. We say this a lot in, in project management, and I said this in my lectures as well, is that the planning phase is by far the most important, even though it doesn't produce the fruit of an implementation. It is where it's the easiest to make changes and the least expensive to make those changes. So organizations tend to be so eager to get to the end that forget how important it is to start it off as slow as possible. And then, once you have the direction and the team set up, then you can move forward as fast as is feasible. But usually they skip the planning phase, they move forward, they don't cover the requirements, they don't understand the impact to their customers and start write-off. And that tends to start that snowball effect of rolling down the hill of getting larger and larger. And at that point, it becomes a little bit of a blame game. And we can talk a little bit about that on, on some of those cases that you're going to talk about.
Yeah.
So it's, 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 it's people and it's, and it's the planning. It's, it's those two biggest areas that we see typically start the process.
And the irony of that is that software vendors and system integrators generally, it's in their best interest for you, the client, to skip what you just said. You know, if, if I can get you to start the implementation, start designing, building tech now, I can sell you the software faster. I can get my technology consultants billable faster. So that it's kind of in everyone's best interest, except for the clients, for you to skip everything you just talked about. And that's the, that's the weird worst part of the whole industry. Yeah, that's.
And to, 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 to hammer that home even more, I think that a lot of clients, again, whether it's expert witness cases that we are engaged with or our own clients through an implementation, they get charmed by a one-off software vendor pursuit. Everyone has problems. So when they get a call from a software vendor and says, hey, if you have this problem, we can help you. Like, hey, we do have that problem. Why don't you help us? Without doing proper due diligence of are there other players out there that might be a better fit for us? Is there a little bit more rigor in understanding how close their software fits our needs or not? They just love being pursued by a software vendor, taking them out to dinner, go to a conference. All of a sudden they're signing a contract and halfway through they're like, I think we probably should have talked more before we started this project.
Yeah.
So kind of full circle of it's, it's in this vendor's best interest to move forward fast. And usually the client is unaware of how important it is to say, stop. Let's talk to a couple more vendors. Let's talk about requirements, whatever those might be. And let's just get started, right? It's slow it down, slow it down.
Yeah. And to your point, you don't see the tangible results in the planning. So it's easy to say, well, there, you know, I'm not making progress if I spend, say, three months on the planning stage or six months or whatever it is. That's three or six months that I've, I've quote unquote, lost, you know, whereas I could just be designing, building, testing stuff now. And I can see and touch and feel the software. So it's sort of like, it sort of makes sense in some ways why we would gravitate to that because we're human and that's the more tangible part of the project. But the more important parts of the project are the things you can't see or touch or feel. And it all comes out in that planning phase, which, which we'll get to here.
Yeah, and I think that usually when we have conversations like this, the, the idea of agile software development comes up like, well, that's the whole purpose is to spend less time planning and more time doing. But if, if you look at a, at an enterprise-wide system implementation or ERP implementation, they don't lend themselves well to a full-on agile project. One, for two, two reasons. One, it's so monumental in the changes that implementation is going to have on the organization. You need to have stronger and more enforceable documentation and approval stage gates. But more importantly is agile for a complex project like this will only work, in my opinion, in my experience, for an organization that has already adapted that type of methodology. If, if an organization is completely foreign to the concept of agile development, having a software vendor come in and say, don't worry about it. You don't have to worry about it. It's for us. That usually gets off on a wrong foot as well. And I think we've, we've mentioned this a couple of times in previous conversations, but we typically see system integrators transform from a rigor of, of a waterfall approach upfront to an agile midstream. Cause it's easier for them. They don't have to do the documentation and they start kind of, and I hate to say winging it. But the client is really unaware of what is happening because there's not anything that they can review other than potentially a mock-up of a, of a, of a screen or functionality that doesn't necessarily come to fruition in testing.
Yeah.
And by that time, it's a little too.
Yeah. Squishy is the word that comes to mind. It makes for a squishy, squishy. It's a technical term, but it means you can't get, the agile approach is sort of squishy. We're not documenting everything. We're winging it, like you said. And it's, it is a good cover, a good front to be able to get away with that because you can say, well, waterfall sucks and that's why all these projects fail. So we're going to go agile and, you know, in my opinion, agile makes things worse when, when not done in moderation. I want to say hello to the audience here, just a few, before we dive into some more questions here. Want to say hello to some people joining us here today. Ed on YouTube from Mexico City, thank you for being here today. Xavier joining us from Santiago, Chile, thank you for being here. Derek joining from Indiana in the US. Mark joining from Belize, thank you for joining and chiming in on where you're at here today. Sachin from India, thank you for being here. Ready says hello to both of us. Hello, Ready. Thank you for being here. And then Amy's got a comment. Sorry to block your face with this long comment here, Scott. But Amy's on LinkedIn says, highly skilled project management with a methodology that is robust, but can accommodate organizational nuances is so undervalued by many clients. One size does not adequately fit all scenarios. So that's a very good point. And I think, you know, that we'll, we'll get into this, but you know, this sort of one size fits all, you know, best practice approach to ERP implementations creates in my opinion, a lot more problems than it, than it solves. But we can dive into that as we, as we get through these case studies here. Yep. And speaking of the case studies, I want to, oh, we've got a few other people here. Patrick from Poland. Hello, Patrick. I, I know him. Cedric from Belgium, thank you for being here. Got a lot of people joining from all over the place here today. Salvador from Monterrey, Mexico. So thank you everyone for joining. We've got people from all over the place here today, which is really cool. So I want to do this, Scott, I'm gonna, I'm just going to pop up this news article here. I'm, I'm not going to leave it up, but just to sort of set the context here for what we're going to talk about first. We're going to talk about Spar Group, which is a retailer. This article says they're based in South Africa. I actually posted a video about this, this case study, and I got a lot of heat, a lot of flack for saying that they're a South African retailer. But a lot of people said they're, they're a Netherlands-based retailer, which South, you know, there's a South African division of Spar Group for certain that, that they're talking about here where they failed in their implementation. So Spar Group implemented SAP. So they, they implemented and they just recently, this is a recent case study here in the last year. I think the article here is, yeah, just from earlier this year. But they had a pretty significant failure with their SAP project resulted in substantial financial losses, financial losses. What were some of the primary issues in the case, just from what we've seen in public record? What were some of the primary issues in this case? And how could they have been presented in your opinion?
Yeah, this is a, actually, and not to debate whether they're South African or from, from the Netherlands, but how they operate in parts of South Africa is that they're actually a vertical integrated distributor. So the, the group that implemented SAP was actually the distributor to retailers of the same name. And so the challenge that they had in driving what they, the ultimate result of this post-go-live work was that they, they lost sales because they didn't necessarily see what they're calling the, the margins of their product line in the new SAP dashboard. And that kind of raises a lot of, a lot of concerns and questions around that. Obviously, the, the, the story doesn't go into detail of how they started. But that's one of those things that if you took the time upfront, you probably should have realized whether something as important as looking at margins on your product line would be sufficient or not. It's not one of those things that should be a surprise. But because of the inner workings between the distributor and the retailer, which are essentially in the story the same, having them be part of the process upfront probably would have potentially highlighted that deficiency earlier. But one of the things that we, we see is, and certainly the market is saying this more often than not, is that this idea of a single ERP to solve all your problems is no longer viable in most organizations, especially those that have complex systems or have been around for a long time and have entrenched processes. So there could have been easily an opportunity potentially to deploy SAP as the base of their, of their enterprise functionality. But then looking at a different dashboard to solve that problem. So if they said that, you know, we're going to choose SAP, we're going to choose another software vendor and everything's going to live in that, that starts becoming one of those shoehorn functionality into something that may not be the best for this organization. And in fact, we, we are working with an active client right now that tried that same philosophy two years ago and it, and it didn't work. And so one of the things that we, we initiated as they hired us to be part of the PMO group, PMO group is to look at other applications outside of the ERP to solve those essentially secret sauce processes. Right? In many cases, finance and accounting are pretty much, as long as they're accommodating regional requirements from localization, taxation and the like, most can use it out of the box with some configuration. But if it's a dashboard, if it's order management system that is very unique in what they are winning business at, maybe that the ERP is not the best solution for that functionality. And so not knowing the, the full details of the, of the, the Spar implementation of SAP, were they trying to do that? Were they trying to put everything into SAP and still went to the point of going live? And yet after go-live, they're saying stuff like the dashboard doesn't provide us visibility to our margins. That seems odd.
Super.
Yeah. And I think most, and for the folks that are mentioning project management on the chat, most of the time in these implementations, they skip the planning phase as fast as possible. They move into excruciating execution of the project because they're learning as they're going. And then because they are time-sensitive or want to go live, let's say in a, in a, in a particular physical year, they skip or truncate testing and training. And so there may be flaws in the application about to be deployed, but because they're so eager to go live, for whatever reason, they let things go into production and then they have no time to recover from disasters like what SPAR is, is, is indicating in this, in this story. Is, you know, if you, if, if risk management is a key thing for you, you cannot disrupt your business at all. Incorporate a lot more testing and let the go-live delay if that is a key thing for you.
Yeah.
So obviously in this case, they probably shouldn't have gone live if they had known something like this, what's going to impact their business as much as it has.
Yeah, I mean, you, you hit so many good points there. I mean, the, the first thing you mentioned around testing, you know, you should have known, when I say you, I don't mean you, Scott. I mean, the, the, if, if you're, if you're a broker, you should have known that, that pricing margin analysis is really important to your business. And you should have tested that. And if you did test it the right way and thoroughly and, and you documented and you corrected and remediated issues you identified during testing. If you did all that, those test cycles and you had the scenarios laid out the way they should have been laid out, you would have caught this. I mean, you would have known that the margin, the, the margin analysis doesn't work for us. And you would have, you would have fixed it. It may, it may have delayed the go-live to your point. It may have pushed things out, but you at least would have gotten it right. And it probably would have been a lot cheaper just to spend the extra time and money to fix it and push off the go-live. Then it would be just to go, go at it and go live anyway. I'm curious to hear.
And just so everyone doesn't, one, one more thing, sorry if you don't mind. There is, I haven't been on one implementation where the product is defect-free at go-live. So let's be clear about that. There will be problems that go into production. The importance of project management and leadership approval is what are you allowing to go into production?
And how big is that risk?
Low, medium defects, fine. Yes, exactly. So this would have been a critical defect that you wouldn't have allowed to go into production.
That's a great point. We're not, we're not seeking perfection here. You know, it's not going to be perfect, no matter how hard you want or try. It's a great point. And if this was like a kind of an exception, you know, an exception, one-off business process that we, we didn't fully test during the test cycle because it's a one-off rare business process, that's, that does happen, right? You're not going to test every single possible scenario.
Yep.
But something as core as margin analysis, especially for a distribution company, you kind of look at who they are. Distribution companies generally don't have high margins. Usually their margin of errors or the margin in general is lower, which makes for a lower margin of error in terms of efficiency and that sort of thing. So I think those, those are, those are good points there that you bring up. I'm curious here from the audience, though, I'd love to hear as we're going through this conversation here, we're going to dive into the, we're kind, we're kind of doing a fly overview here of these three case studies. And then we're going to come back and talk about the common themes across all three of them. But I'd love to hear from the audience here, what you think the biggest key or keys to success versus failure are. We're kind of diving into this here today. We're going to get into it. But I'd love to hear the comments from the audience. What do you think, if you had to pick one or two things that are just absolutely critical to avoid failure, what do you think they are? I'd love to hear your feedback here. All right. So we'll come back to this. We'll kind of, we'll get into some of these nuances and patterns across the three. But I want to pull up another one here, another recent failure. And there's so many to choose from. I mean, even, just as a side note, even as, even as we're preparing for this, so I send, when we have a podcast guest on, I try to send the questions either Thursday or Friday, the week before. So I send you these questions and then literally, it was literally later that day that I sent you the questions. There was another failure that someone on our team forwarded to me. And it was the SAQ in Canada, they spent over a billion dollars on this big massive failure. And I, and so my point being, there's always new failures coming up. And it, and I wanted to kind of throw in last minute, hey, let's talk about this, this big SAQ case study. But I didn't want to, you know, throw you off at the last minute like that. But point being, there's just so many of these case studies that we hear in the news. You would think over time, people sort of learn lessons and start to fix the way they, they're doing this. But it's the same, same old crap that they've been doing for, for the last couple of days.
You know, the, the, yeah. And you know, when we get called in for assessments and projects that are about to go off the rails and they call us midstream, it's a, I have that same perspective every time we kick off. It's like, how, how are we here again?
Right.
And I think the, the only, the only challenge we have is ourselves, right? When we, when we look at this stuff, most of the time the technology will work or the methodologies will get the project done. It's the human nature of things, right? It's people who are at the beginning of their career, they have no idea what they're about to get into. It's people at the end of their career who don't really potentially care how it goes and everyone in the middle. And as long as there are humans involved in organizations, we're going to trip over ourselves over and over again. And no matter how much great advice we give to the clients at the upfront of even the idea of a selection of a system, the same attitudes come in of, well, we have to get it done by May. Well, why? That's, that's not, shouldn't drive the project. Or I like this vendor, I went to their conference and I signed the contract already. And you're just like, here we go again.
Yeah.
Right? It's just get yourselves out of the way and do things methodically and it will get you out of jail more often than not.
Yeah, just because they took you backstage to meet Bruno Mars at the conference where they had Bruno Mars perform doesn't mean that that's a good, that's a good software for your, for your organization. Here's, here's a, I'm going to get to a couple of comments here from the audience here. Amy on LinkedIn says, and where is the fit gap analysis? How does something pass testing without an idea of the impact past go-live? That's it. It's a great point. Salvador on LinkedIn says, the planning phase is the most important stage of the implementation. Cedric says, testing, testing is most important. Yaz from YouTube says, testing as well. Here's an interesting comment. Derek on YouTube says, clear and tangible expectations of all stakeholders. That's a really good one, sort of that clarity in alignment, just being on the same page with what it is you're, you're trying to accomplish. Salvador says, a lot of testing scenarios. Not just testing, but a lot of testing scenarios, which is, which is a good point. RR on YouTube says, respect for covering this topic. So thanks you, thank you for all the, the great feedback there. Oops, fix. Gosh, there we go. Okay. So what I want to do now is let's shift gears and talk about this, this other case study, this, this next one here, which is, let me see if I can get this right. So this is City Council, Birmingham City Council in the UK, which is Europe's largest local authority, had a 216.5 million pound loss over their Oracle system implementation. Part of why I wanted to bring this one up too, is not only is it recent, not only is a government, which, you know, government tends to have some of the biggest failures that we see, but also because we want to point out that failure doesn't necessarily correlate with vendor. You know, we talked about SAP a moment ago, Spar Group. You may, it's easy to pick on SAP and say, well, SAP has all these big failures, but SAP also has a lot of really big clients. So you're just going to hear about their failures more commonly than you might others. But point being, you know, even Oracle fails and others, you know, we can pick any software vendor out there and we can find use of failures and some, some case studies of what not to do. But in this case, they tried to implement Oracle. And in this Oracle rollout, they had severe challenges, including cost overruns, operational disruptions. What, what lessons can other public sector organizations or private sector, it really doesn't matter what, what, whether you're public or private sector here. But what are some of the lessons that organizations can take from this particular case study?
Yeah, what, what, what really got to me and it, and it relates to other projects that I've read about that have failed, not just software, but even construction projects. There was a sense in this story that there was a fear potentially of, of communicating to leadership that there was a problem in the first place. That, that the, the status of the project was probably green almost throughout the project until it actually got off, off schedule. But it seemed like there was a, a sense that we couldn't tell the real story of the project status during the engagement. And, and that then goes back to that human concept again. Did people fear that they would get fired or that they would be chastised in public? Or did the leadership tell the project management, don't tell me anything unless it's about to stop? And so this thing progresses forward. In fact, we actually had an expert witness, witness case a, a couple of years ago where this was part of the challenge. We, when we go into an expert witness case, we obviously get all kinds of email correspondence, documentation, even versions of one document. So we'll see three different edits or additions of a document. You can see what they're adding and taking away. The cases, it wasn't until the 11th hour that the project team actually had to kind of fall on the sword a little bit and say, we, we can't go live for all these reasons. But it really started a year and a half earlier. And so we tried to dig into, why was there the fear that you can't tell the true status of a project? So you can make course corrections. And so that kind of kept coming back in the story that, that there was this inability to, to truly project real status to leadership so that again, informed decisions can be made and course corrections can be made. And in fact, we've, we've. And in fact, we've, we've stressed that enough to our clients when we, when we get brought in midstream, where even the client will tell us, is it really green? Is it really yellow? Tell me the real story because we can't do this again. So that, it makes me proud, I guess, in, in, in a sense that they're actually listening to us and they're actually very concerned of, is this the true status of our project? And I, the reason I mentioned a, a construction project is I used to live in California and, you know, they've been building this high speed rail for decades. And it's billions of dollars over budget. And you just sit there and wonder, how did it get to this point? And you realize there's probably a lot of storytelling of, of it's their fault or our fault, but, but it's still going, it's still going to happen. And there's no, there's no benefit to anyone unless somebody again is fearful of their job. Just tell the real story and then, and then change and, and make those decisions that are necessary. It's not an easy process. We tell clients right upfront, implementations of any enterprise system is not an easy process. There will be hiccups. There will be problems. There might even be some showstoppers here and there, but make, make everyone known of what's the challenges at stake and make those decisions.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there are such good points because a lot of times we see this, you know, it's kind of in slow motion with clients or especially in expert witness cases where, to your point, the status reports all green, 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 everything looks great. And then boom, all of a sudden, oh man, we've got a bunch of red here. And you know, we're failing testing cycles or you know, people aren't ready for the go live. And it appears as though, wow, all this stuff, just this train wreck just sort of happened. The reality is this stuff is, this stuff accumulates over time. You know, this doesn't happen overnight. And the problem is you see these sort of back to the perverse incentives. You've got a system integrator and software vendor in there that's got two things going against, against you, the client. One is that they are incentivized to sort of hide any real risks or problems or works with the project or with their, with their software. The second part of it, which is probably even harder to get your arms around is the fact that, you know, your, your software vendor and your system integrator, if they're the ones managing this project, they're looking at things through the technical lens. And they're looking at like, hey, the software works. And in the case of, we just talked about Spar Group a minute ago. I would suspect that the pricing margin analysis features of SAP works. I mean, SAP has tons of clients that are using that feature. So we know it works within S4HANA, but it didn't work for Spar Group because they've, they had a different need or they had a different way that they needed to analyze that. And I think that's where we get in trouble is we view it from the technical lens and say, yeah, everything's good, looks good and it works. But you look over at the business and it's not okay. And that's, those two things combined to create like a huge blind spot for, for clients. How, how do you, you know, this might be a self-serving question. In fact, it is a self-serving question. You know, how can technology agnostic advisors like Third Stage, how can they help uncover some of those risks before they become sudden last minute red status reports?
Yep. Yep. It's, it's, and for, for those that are listening, Third Stage is not a system integrator. But we have resources available to us that know all the, the ERP applications out there. So our, our discussions with potential clients focus on us being the business advocate in an implementation. And what that means is most clients don't have a super strong project management group, first of all. And even if they do, they might not have gone through an ERP implementation ever in their, their careers. And so when we get brought in, you know, two, three people, we are kind of the, the tiebreaker in a lot of meetings and transfer of communication so that we can, and this is a technical term, we can call BS on, on either clients not providing information, even though they're telling the vendor they are. Or the vendor shaking their head and saying, we understand your requirement and we kind of stand back because hopefully we know the client better. We can sit there and go, I don't think you understand the requirement that you just shook your head saying, I, I understand. So we help facilitate the, the improved communication between all parties. When in many cases, and I would say this almost as a 98% chance of, of when we get brought into an assessment project, that it's been the client and the SI only. And they, they think they're talking, they think they're communicating, they think they're understanding where the project is until we come in and realize both are, are lying or they just don't know the truth. And so having us, any kind of third party system agnostic, agnostic group like Third Stage, we help kind of fill in the gaps to make sure that if you say it's going to be a year and a half project, you're going to get a year and a half project. And that actually is, is a big driver of some of the challenges we see in expert witness cases is, let's say a lot of companies are at end of life for their current ERP. They've been on it for 20 plus years. So they need to migrate to a new ERP. But when they hear firms like Third Stage talk about digital transformation, they say, hey, that's a great concept. So not only do we have to replace our ERP, we're going to throw in a whole bunch of other work in one single project. And we're going to do everything. We're going to do process improvement, process changes, org changes, new systems. And we're going to be perfect at the end of this project. But what ends up happening is it's, it's a three year project that turns out to be six, right? And that does no one any, any justice. And so our recommendation is to have tighter projects, have parallel projects if necessary, but don't lump everything into one single project and say, you're on a transformation course. We tell our, we advise our clients, it is multiple projects over multiple years to get to a state where you can say, I'm really proud of where we are today. So bigger, the longer the project, the more prone it's going to have to be a failure.
Right. Exactly. And that's the, that's the unfortunate, unfortunate reality here. Here's a comment from Amy on LinkedIn. She says, lack of prioritization of experienced client side project management, change roles coupled with a client that, that clearly handed the project responsibilities over. Successful projects are never issue free, though the process, through the process, but they succeed because the clients free their SMEs to bring their organizational expertise and the partner brings solution expertise. And I think this is a great point because a lot of, a lot of organizations and not just in the public sector, not just big organizations. We see it with small and midsize companies too. A lot of organizations and project teams feel this need or want to sort of abdicate responsibility for the project. And they think, hey, you know, you're the SAP expert, you're the Oracle expert, you're the Microsoft Dynamics expert or whatever. Come in and manage this project for us. Well, yeah, that they are experts in technology, but it's like hiring a plumber to come build your house for you. It just doesn't make sense and you wouldn't rely on a plumber to build your entire house for you. But yet that's what we do in these big massive digital transformations. So is that something you see often too, where, where you don't have that right balance of outside support, which you do need? But you also need that internal support. You have to have these internal resources that take ownership and accountability for the project, but yet a lot of clients.
Absolutely. Yeah. And it's a, we see this often as well. You have an executive team that fully supports what gets presented to them from a project management standpoint. They understand the, the case for change. And then you have the workers who might really understand their processes and get down to the minutia of, I need the functionality to do this, or I need the result of this process to give me that. And then there's a chasm in the middle. And, and these organizations think again, that they can turn over the keys to a very experienced system integrator and go just fix it all, right? And it takes a lot more work than that. And part of this third party assistance is we help fill that gap. Because we can see leadership saying, yes, go tell my people to do this. And then the people go, you don't have the right to tell me to do this. Let my boss tell me that. And there's this back and forth that keeps going on and we help kind of communicate a little bit better. The one in the SI might hear one thing, they'll, they'll start working on it and they'll hear something else. They'll start working on that too. Even though there's a conflict in what those two messages are. And we start seeing that earlier when there's another set of eyes that helps assist in a, in a project of the scale, right? Small project, two month project, don't need us, right? But if you're a multi-year engagement, you're going to have a lot of challenges in there that the SI is going to be focusing on just what they've been hired to do. And the PM group, that might be the client side, doesn't know that where there's smoke, there's fire. They might think it's all related to the same fire and it's not. And so we kind of bring that out in data and people tend to be a big part of that of, of challenges that maybe get wait until the end of the project to start getting resolved. And by that time it's too late.
Right, right. That's a, that's a great point. I want to get to a couple of their comments here and then I'm going to shift gears and talk about Little here in just a second. Here's a comment from Victor on YouTube. Are you the dude who made the intro to logistics video? It might've been, I had, I do have an intro to logistics video on my YouTube channel. If you liked it, then yeah, that was me. If you didn't like it, must've been Scott or someone else. I don't know whose it was, but I'm not sure which logistics video, but yes, I have a logistics video out there as well. So this is an interesting comment from Andre on YouTube. Andre says, very few people understand demand management and even fewer understand the implementation of it. Digital transformation, even fewer understand that. That was poetic. It's almost like a poem. I feel like I need to save that. It's very true. Yeah. Well, well said for sure. I want to shift gears though, and come to, and we've got a bunch of audience questions we're going to get to as well. But just to sort of set the context and get some themes out on the table here, I want to share this one too. And this is, um, this is a really interesting one because for a couple of reasons. One is it's a massive failure. A lot of people know of this company. And this is a grocery retailer based out of Germany called Little. And they had a $500 million SAP project. It failed and they pulled the plug on it and are, I believe they're still in the process or maybe they already have done it. They've gone back to their legacy system to sort of re, re, recover and get their operations stabilized. So they attempt to implement SAP. It ended after seven years, approximately 500 million euros, I should say. I think I said dollars, it should be euros. How did resistance to change existing business processes contribute to this outcome? Cause that was a big deal that they talk about in this article. But let's talk about resistance to change for a minute. How's that applied a little here?
Well, it's a, it's, it's amazing how many projects that we're on, even prior to me joining Third Stage where the client says, our primary focus is to use it out of the box. And, and that's usually the last time we hear that. Because then when we get into the, the meat and the potatoes, especially even during the selection of a system, let alone the implementation, it comes back to, well, everything that we do is very unique to us and we need the system to change to accommodate that. And you, when you start hearing that, you know, the battle started. And what I would advise clients prior to even coming close to an implementation is to spend time internally to understand your end to end processes and decipher what is value add activities. Cause we can get into another topic on, on robotic process automation and AI and those kinds of things to handle the blocking and tackling within these systems. But really figure out, and this is a, usually comes out during design sessions during an implementation. And by then I think it's a little too late of what really is unique to us? What is our competitive advantage? What is our secret sauce? And focus on if the current ERP platform that you're selecting or implementing can satisfy those, that secret sauce processes. If not, stay away from customization and focus on potentially another application that can fit that. Because everyone, I think even on, everyone on this, on this, this session today knows that any kind of customization or, or far reaching extensions of, of an ERP platform is going to cause problems when we get into enhancements and upgrades and things like that. So focusing on what's really unique and to your processes should happen quite honestly before the project. We see this happen a lot as well of organizations dumping process improvement, process optimization during an ERP. And what that tells me is they're not going to take the standard out of the box processes. They're going to do a hybrid of what's out of the box, might do some customization or configuration or both. Plus do some process changes, all happening at the same time. And that confuses the hell out of the workforce. And it probably doesn't get you to the, the end state you think it's going to get you. And in fact, one of the things that we advise clients, especially those that haven't gone through a big ERP implementation before, is to really assess all the other applications and projects you have going on and figure out how those are going to impact this project. So I know that the Lindell's project, I mean, it was, it was massively long. And to the point where you're probably putting in more and more money and time thinking it's going to fix it when it probably wasn't. And hence they pulled the plug and now they're going to kind of go backwards again. So really understanding what's going on, even we have a client now that is, has a number of on premise applications that may or may not interface to the new ERP. But they all have their own roadmap of migration to the cloud or enhancements or changes to it. And unless you get that all upfront, as you get into the project, those things pop up and cause you to have to course correct a little bit too much. Oh, this upgrade over here is happening. We're going to replace this system. Did we know about that before we started this project? And if not, why didn't we? Because all those things are going to cause noise. They're going to cause noise and the longer the project, the more of those things are going to happen, especially market changes as well. So not surprising when you have a five plus year ERP implementation, you're going to have some changes and problems coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And it's, it's just, it blows my mind. I don't know about what you think, Scott, but I mean, it blows my mind to think about spending 500 million euros and then having to pull the plug. I mean, how, I guess where I struggle is like, how did you, you as a company, how did you let it get to that point? You know, how did you not know 500 million dollars in, or until it was 500 million euros in? How did you not know it was going to be a failure? I mean, it just blows my mind. If you had the right governance.
So again, that's. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, you might, you might have pulled the plug earlier or, or you might have course corrected and you probably would have spent a lot less money if you would have done one of those two things earlier.
And you wonder if, if the, we've gone into assessment projects where we've asked for, okay, show us all your requirements, all your interfaces and all the, the scope documents that you use to approve this project moving forward. And they're like, well, we're still collecting that. And you're like, you're still collecting requirements during the implementation? Well, yeah. I mean, that happens all the time. I'm like, yeah, but you're adding like 10 or 20 new requirements a month. That is not normal. So you, that urgency that we talked about at the beginning of this call, trying to get started and we'll just kind of catch up as we get into it. There has to be something fundamentally wrong with the scope of the project for you to have spent 500 million euros, five plus years to have missed the mark, right? So, so looking back at what was the big areas that they kept churning? We have had one expert witness case that I've been involved with where the software truly was oversold. They, they sold some vaporware. They, they sold some development functionality that never came to fruition during the project. But that's rare. That's very rare. So for this to have gone that long, was it really the system that wasn't meeting your needs? Or were you changing your mind or trying to force it into a hole it should never have been put in? So I, I'd like to believe it wasn't the application at this point. Unless you're trying to really push it beyond its, its normal use case and, and stick it in place that should, again, shouldn't have been put in.
Well, I mean, you know, this isn't a no name product we're talking about here. We're talking about SAP S4HANA. And we're talking about a product, by the way, S4HANA, that's being used by plenty of other retailers and distributors throughout the world. So it, to your point, it's probably not SAP. Now, someone may have done something to SAP to break it or to make it not quite fit what you wanted it to do. Or maybe the, the, the functionality of SAP wasn't exactly what Little wanted or needed. That's a different story. But the software works. It's just a matter of, you know, that's something you identify early on during the evaluation process. You should know that before you even start implementing, you should know that there is an issue or a challenge with the pricing margin analysis piece of it, and you should have a work, a solution for that. It shouldn't be something you find out at go live. I mean, to me, that's just unacceptable. And the other thing that comes to mind is you, you talk about 500 million euros. How many stores could they have built for 500 million euros? Or you know, how many, how many factories could a manufacturer build for 500 million euros? And by the way, if, let's just say, instead of spending 500 million euros on this SAP project, they decided to spend 500 million euros on opening new stores. I guarantee you, they have enough corporate governance in place to where they would have not let those stores just go to waste and get, go way over budget. And then ultimately decided, well, screw it. We can't finish the, the building. We can't finish the store build outs. We're just not going to open it. I mean, you just wouldn't see that in, in a corporate setting, but yet companies do it all the time with these, these big ERP implementations. It blows my mind because it's like they treat other capital investments with such rigor and discipline. But when it comes to an ERP project, they just let these budgets spiral out of control with nothing to show for it. And I, I just don't understand it in some ways, but.
Well, there is this, the, the part of that story is that they, Lindell did, is a little bit unique in their industry. Well, there is this, the, the part of that story is that they uh, Lindell uh, did, is a little bit unique in their industry of how they price inventory. Um, and uh, out of the box was one form of pricing inventory and they operate in a different way. So if that was fundamental to their business model.
Yes.
How did they start in the first place? Were they trying to force the application to change how it prices and values inventory to meet their business model? Maybe they should have gone to a different uh, invo- uh, inventory uh, warehouse management system that prices it the way they, they wanted it. So.
Right.
Uh, might be another, you know, square hole, round peg kind of thing or vice versa.
Yeah. And, and one thing you have to be careful of in those cases is this is what drives me crazy about the industry is that um, when that happens where you've got this functionality that doesn't fit the way you run your business. A lot of times what you'll hear from software vendors and system integrators, you get this refrain that, well, you're just not willing to change. You know, we have best practices built into our software and you just need to adapt to the software. And to me, yeah, okay, that's true. In some cases, there's parts of your business where you probably can just adapt. You should just adapt the way the software works. But there's going to be other to your, use your words, the secret sauce. There's stuff that you do that you intentionally do differently from your competitors. Because you, uh, you have a competitive advantage. I hope you have a competitive advantage. If you don't, then that's a whole nother conversation. But uh, assuming you do have a competitive advantage, there's, that's going to create strain and, you know, tension with your ERP system. Because your ERP system probably can't give you all you need to address your secret sauce nor, nor should it. You shouldn't want it to. Because if, if it could do that, that means all your competitors have the same secret sauce, which makes them not a secret sauce. So I, I don't know. That, to me, there's a, there's a bit of arrogance, a bit of arrogance in the industry where we say, we, and when I say we, it's not us. Cause we're not affiliated with any of these vendors, but a lot of the vendors will say, well, you just refuse to change. Just fall, you know, adapt to our software. Why are you trying to be different? You're not different. And well, that's true when it comes to accounts payable maybe, or you know, how to manage your GL, but that's not true when it comes to some of your areas of secret sauce. So.
Yep.
Interesting, interesting stuff. Now here's a question that it actually came in a while ago, but it's sort of related to everything we're talking about here. And it goes back to the testing thread too, that we were talking about on one of the previous uh, case studies. And this is from Darian on, on LinkedIn. Darian says, you pointed out that no system goes live without defects. It's just a matter of managing the risks. How do you help clients define what's an acceptable defect versus a critical issue that should delay a go live? I love this question.
Hopefully. Yeah, I, I will say that, that one of the things that, that we establish upfront is levels of escalation of everything. So what is a, what is a testing scenario that is critical versus, you know, low risk or low defect value? Uh, what, what justifies being brought up to the PMO meetings that happen on a weekly basis versus going to the steering committee uh, for approval or discussion? So we lay that out right up front. Uh, and so some of the things that, that uh, some of the driving conditions or questions about even whether I should do this project in the first place is is a customer going to pay for it? Is it regulatory in nature? Is it our secret sauce? Those key things are critical. Um, not being able to close the, your books in two days after the end of the month, critical. Not being able to see the status of a shipment every hour of the day may not be as critical, right? As long as you get a daily update of where it is. So there's levels of criticality of everything, including, you know, testing scenarios and what a, what importance does a defect have in moving forward to the next stage? And in fact, we have a, a client now where we are, um, we've incorporated a second uh, system integration test. Because the client is very adverse to having disruption in their business at go live. So it's adding another three, four months to the project, but it's important for them to get there. Uh, and so we will, we hope and would expect that all even low and medium defects would likely get resolved during the second sit. So this is, this should be a near perfect go live uh, for all the things that are tested. But uh, to your point, Eric, we don't test every single scenario. Uh, and no, no new product launch tests is every, every way that you could use their product, right? Just what are the most common and the most important? But something that happens once a year, most likely could work out a, a, or create a workaround. If the system doesn't work exactly what it needs to when that event happens. But do you stop the implementation from going into production because of that once a year event that's not critical? Probably not.
Right. That's a great point. It also brings up the, sort of ties into this concept of customization, which we've, we've been circling around this concept of customization. Um, you've got customization and then you've got just standard off-the-shelf software. And then obviously there's a gray area of, of a hybrid or, or of an in-between. How do you see or how do you, how do you advise organizations on how to, how to find that right balance between customization and standardization?
Do we got another hour?
Yeah, I was gonna say that this is a whole nother, and that's the problem with most of my questions I have for you, which by the way, just for the audience's uh, edification or entertainment purposes, I sent Scott a list of about 15 questions I, I thought I'd ask him. I think I've gotten through about four or five of them, just because so many of these questions are so broad and we can go in so many different directions. But it, it, do your best, if you don't mind, just how do you summarize that, that striking of balance? Does it tie back to that phase zero planning piece of it that you were talking about before? Or is there some other magic silver bullet?
It does, it does. We, we didn't, we haven't even talked about uh, a business case and ROI and KPIs and all those wonderful metric uh, type of things, but uh, why are you doing this in the first place? Well, it might be, again, like I said, you know, your legacy system that's end of life, you have to do this, so let's get some value out of it. But if you're a proactive organization that routinely looks at your processes and applications, you, you can tie into what is acceptable to change, what isn't, based upon what you're trying to get out of the project in the first place. So if you're just trying to keep the lights on, take whatever you can out of the box and just keep moving forward. But if it's something that you're an industry leader, uh, and there are a number of processes that are quite unique, but you still need a new ERP. That might be again, one of those cases where rather than customization, increase risk potentially by going to another application in that area. And, and I know we talked about demand planning, uh, that's usually a case where if you're using demand planning now at a sophisticated level, probably an ERP functionality of a new platform won't meet your needs. So you're probably in the, in, in, in that world where rather than trying to stretch the ERP's function around demand planning, look at another solution that will interface into the system. Um, if you slice and dice it and do a lot of things that aren't, are above what normal or basic organizations do on demand planning, change that. Uh, we see this very often in ERP implementations with, with uh, smaller organizations where an HR and a CRM module in an ERP might be perfectly acceptable to them. But if you're on Workday, you're on Salesforce, you're not going to leave those platforms to go to the ERP functionality that's, that's embedded, right? You're gonna, you're gonna have different mix of application layouts to meet your needs. And so if you're at a point where you're like, I only want one system in our entire company, you're going to have to adapt to what they have and don't customize. But if you're in a, a more, it's more complex, sophisticated uh, user group, a single ERP platform likely won't work for you. You'll need a combination of different applications to work together for you to meet your, whatever those KPIs and business case items were at the beginning of the project.
Right, right. Here's a question. It's, it's, it's kind of a bombshell in my opinion, but I, I've got to pull it up because it's such a, we could spend a whole hour on this, this topic too. And this, this strikes a nerve for me too. This is from YouTube. Uh, this person says, I'm 21 with eight months of experience and I feel my team's approach to stretching tasks for profit feels inefficient. It makes me question if I'm being dishonest. Um, and I just want to pull this off because I had the exact same experience when I first started in consulting. I felt dirty and gross, to use more technical term. I felt dirty and gross in the way we were expected to bill regardless of value added. And when I was 24 years old, just out of grad school. And so um, I do think, you know, I pull it up partially because it strikes a nerve for me. I can relate to this. I feel for you. I, I had the same feeling when I started my career in consulting. But um, I do think that this also contributes to some of the problems we see in the industry. You see, you see these big system integrators, big consulting firms, not just the big ones too, by the way, it's other, other mid-sized firms and others are guilty of it too. To where it's in their best interest to stretch this out. I mean, whoever was the system integrator on this, on this little project, for example, they benefited from the fact that this budget ballooned into 500 million euros. Client did not benefit, but someone did, and that someone is going to be SAP and the system integrator. So I think that's a, you know, a broken part of our industry that's unfortunate. I don't know how you fix it, um, other than regulate it, which I don't know if anyone really wants that, but it might be where we head someday. But in the meantime, I think it's sort of like a, not a buyer beware, but more of a, this is your project. Your, your contractors, your software vendors do not control this project, nor should they. They might try to convince you otherwise, but it's, it's your project and you have to manage it. And if you're a consultant, getting drug into the dark side, um, I don't know, come work for a company like Third Stage. We, we don't do that stuff. And um, I, in fact, I'm very anti that behavior, which is why I left the big five. I don't know if you saw that. Did you see that too? When you were, when you were at the big consulting firms, did you see that where you had these junior people that are just billing maximum amounts of time?
I mean, the, the, the whole goal is to make partner, right? And the only way to make partner is the, is the uh, have increased revenue. And it's much easier to find scalability in an existing client than the, than to land another one. So if I can continue to add bodies to this project and stretch it out more, I have a likelier, and that goes back to the human behavior again, right? Um, I want to make partner, so I'm going to have my team operate in a certain way, um, that I can drive my success. And that might be then uh, for the, the vendor itself.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, I want to, and I know we're running way uh, longer on time here, but if you don't mind, Scott, I've got one more question from the audience. And then I'm going to a- ask sort of a capstone question here. Um, and I lost the questions. Let me pull it up. So this is from um, Amy on LinkedIn again. Amy says, change management is the post-operative care that ensures that the patient survives, which I, I love that comment. And it sort of leads into a question I had for you, which is, we've talked a bit about change management and how change management appears to be a critical factor in these cases. And in these three cases and, and a lot of the failures we've seen and a lot of the expert witness work we've seen, change management is, is one of the core failure points. But what best practices can companies adopt to ensure successful change management during projects like these?
Well, not to uh, uh, preach uh, or ring my own bell, but uh, I focused my dissertation on the acceptance of technology uh, in the workplace. So what, what we try and encourage is how is the organization going to operate and use the new systems post-go-live as early in the process as possible? So process discussions, change management around what processes are changing and educating the workforce around those changes as early as possible is the start of, I think, a proper change management methodology. Um, training will happen throughout the project. The bulk of the workforce will be trained near the end. Uh, but it's educating folks during the engagement of how the world will be different in the future. Especially if you are going to make some process changes, you're going to have multiple systems get introduced. Uh, explaining and educating the workforce upfront throughout the process is very important. In fact, we, we use process documentation even during the config and design sessions, right? So that the, the SI is very informed of what is in place today and what will change. Um, but I think the change management aspects goes back to, the KPI is the case for change of we, we expect this project to allow us to increase sales by 30% in the following year. How the hell are you going to do that? Just buy a new system? So, so driving to how the system will support that, uh, because it's a lot more uh, flexible to allow us to, let's say an organization is, is huge on mergers and acquisitions. And so this system will allow us to buy our competitors or, or get into a market easier for doing that. So focusing on the change management of how to do that in the new system will just enforce, reinforce when you are doing that after go live. It's going to most likely meet your, your objectives. Um, but uh, I, I think that, that most of our clients are educated in that there will be a disruption in their business after go live. But they typically think that this change management happens once and you're done. Uh, and had, one of the things that I found on, on my research was frequent retraining, re-education on change management and acceptance of feedback of how to continue to improve the processes and the use of the tools needs to be in place. What are the mechanisms for your workforce to be able to say, hey, I like what we're doing now, but this part of it really sucks. So how do I change that, right? How do I, how do we change that to make everyone happier about how, using this system? And it's going to save 10 hours per person a week. Do you have a mechanism to accept that feedback, reintroduce it, come back with some changes and move forward? So that goes back to again, that transformation philosophy.
Right.
Is that it's not one, one and done, right? This is multiple years, multiple projects of enhancements, changes, re-education to get you to where you're going to be. And wherever that is, is quite different for every organization. But um, change manager is, is near and dear to, I know, Third Stage to, to myself. Uh, and it's not a single act in a project and you're done.
Right.
Um, and one of the things that's disappointing is that uh, when we go into clients, very few companies have a formal change management uh, group or team available. And that shows how little they view this activity.
Yeah.
Um, and yet the best system means nothing if people are disgruntled, they don't like how it was implemented and they had no say in its design. The system means nothing now to, to the workforce.
Right. Yeah. No, I, I totally, totally agree. And it's, it's uh, if you're going to invest all this time and money and heartache in a new technology, why not make it less stressful by investing in change management, which is going to make it a lot more successful? Um, by the way, I'm going to ask, I've got a couple of last questions for you here in a second, Scott, but uh, real quickly, I want to share, uh, for those that might be wondering, well, how do I avoid this kind of failure? You know, we've talked a lot about it, but how do we avoid it? Um, I want to share with you guys, uh, digital transformation report. We publish this uh, each year. We put out a uh, a annual, annual report that has top 10, independent reviews of top 10 software rankings uh, in the market space as well as um, trends in the, in the digital transformation space, as well as benchmarks and data to really help you um, navigate some of these challenges. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to, this is the, the uh, the page you can go to, to register, to, to read that. I'm actually going to pop this up on the screen here, um, a QR code that, that you can scan um, right here, whoops, right here. If you scan that QR code that you see at the top left of your screen right now, um, just scan that. You can download the digital transformation report. It's got a lot more best practices in it and lessons to help you avoid failure in your digital transformations. But as people are scanning that and hopefully reading that or downloading it for future reference, um, Scott, um, what do you think is going to happen with digital transformation failure rates in general? Do you think it's on the rise? Do you think it's going to get better? You know, what's your forward-looking prognosis here?
Good question. Um, uh, one of the things we didn't touch on is, is the quality uh, of data and data management throughout this whole process. Um, because the reason I, I say that is a lot of these ERP applications uh, or enterprise in general are introducing a lot of their uh, automation, AI functionality in there. Uh, but if, if you, if anyone's ever looked at uh, chat GPT and, and used it a couple of times, I love the disclaimer of like, the information be, may be incorrect. Don't use it. Don't plagiarize it. It, you know, may be false. You need to do your own research to find out whether it's true or not. Um, I think a lot of organizations are going to be surprised because they're jumping on this whole uh, AI world. And yet most of their infrastructure has redundant or old or bad data. And so these tools are going to leverage that infrastructure to give you recommendations or do work on your behalf. And yet you haven't really cleaned up your house in the first place. So I think, I think we're still going through the blocking and tackling in a lot of cases. Uh, you know, obviously we can talk about Amazons and the like, where they have, you know, 10,000 programmers, you know, developing their own software and, and things like that. That's great. But most organizations that are in the business of technology, um, still have a long way to go to get more modern systems and better data. That takes a little bit of that blood and sweat and then you can leverage some of these u- unique and, and awesome tools that are coming out in the marketplace. So probably not going away anytime soon. Um, just because they're still, I'm amazed even now that we have uh, clients come into us and they're, they're on, you know, 20, 30-year-old legacy system still. And they're like, hey, we want to do AI. Can we do AI today?
No, it's the last thing.
Probably not on the mainframe system that you're on, but yeah. So I think there's still so many organizations out there that need to get more modern. And because they haven't done something like this in a long time, we're probably going to still see some of those failure rates at probably consistent. And because they haven't done something like this in a long time, we're probably going to still see some of those failure rates at probably consistent levels, uh, for the time being.
Right, right. And, um, Amy here on, on LinkedIn, I think this happened last week too. I need to check this QR code. But, um, Amy on LinkedIn says the QR code produces an error four oh four. Um, and if you go, if that does happen to you, if you have an issue with this QR code, just go to thirdstage-consulting.com. And at the very top, just go to the resource center. It, it should be the first featured report you see is the twenty twenty five digital transformation report. By the way, if you go to that resource center, you can also get a guide to change management, which I know Scott was talking quite a bit about change management. Um, there's a ton of, there's a phase zero, uh, implementation planning checklist you can download. Um, how to choose a system integrator, there's a guide to successful SAP projects, guide to successful Oracle projects, all kinds of stuff that you can download for free. So just go to thirdstage-consulting.com if you want to, um, check that out, um, if this QR code doesn't work in particular. But, um, just as a closing question here for you, Scott, what, um, you're going to leave the group here with two or three tangible pieces of advice to avoid failure. What, what would that be? What, what are the two or three things we need to, of all the stuff, great stuff you've shared with us here today? How do you narrow it down to two to three things that we just, that's what you want us to remember?
Um, know your house is my first one. So before embarking on any kind of transformation or system implementation. Know what's going on today. Know everything that you possibly can, what's happening today in your organization. Uh, and, uh, little side note, I'm still amazed, this is another thing that I'm still amazed with, uh, our clients is that. When we get multiple departments in one room and talk about an end-to-end process. I'm, I'm still amazed at how often people are learning new things for, for, for the first time working with this team. So when that happens, I recognize that people really don't know everything going on in their house. Uh, for this to be successful, because what that means is that once you start the implementation, everyone's learning new stuff still. And that shouldn't be the time where these things come out. So spend the time now before you embark on any kind of major project, uh, to, to, to get that team together and talk about end-to-end things of what's wrong and what's right. Um, that will go a long way. Um, but I also think that it's, it's important for the organization to understand where they want to be when they grow up. And I, I maybe mentioned that a couple of times, uh, with you in the past, that they, where are you headed, right? And, and, but don't, but don't shortcut that it takes a little bit of time to get there. So when we talk about project coordination, what's your first step? What's your second step? What are those in projects that you can do sequentially? And what are those projects you can do in parallel?
Right.
Uh, and if it's, if it has to happen sequentially, then that's what has to happen. Uh, don't try and speed it up because you want the end result soon.
Right.
Uh, that's going to get in trouble. The, our, our best clients, uh, quite honestly, are those projects that are in failure mode and they hire us for the assessment. And the only reason that's good is that they understand some of the things we're saying are true. Uh, organizations that haven't started a project like this, we, they hear the concern and the caution and the guidance that we give. They tend to kind of, oh, whatever. And then we almost always get a call back.
Yeah.
Uh, a year later or six months later going, can you help us? So, um, uh, be smart and understand all the pitfalls of an ERP implementation, uh, first. Talk about it internally, then reach out to a firm like us to, to have a conversation.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that because I think right now we've got either two or three active clients that I know of in the last, say, twelve months that. Didn't choose us originally, or they chose not to bring us on two, three, four, five years ago. And then they call us and say, hey, actually we do want to bring you in now to fix some stuff that we screwed up along the way. I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're going to fail if you don't hire Third Stage Consulting. But to your point, a lot of times organizations, they have to go through the pain and learn it themselves. It's sort of like, um, you know, um, when you have kids, um, you know, when they're young, you tell them not to put their hand on the stove. And sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't. Uh, but a lot of times you have to let them put their hand on the stove and burn it and realize, oh, when mom and dad were right, I shouldn't put my hand on the stove. And then they know, you know, you can tell them next time, don't put your hand on the stove and they're going to listen. But sometimes, you know, unless you've been through it, you just, you don't, um, you, you don't understand the urgency. And, and it makes it worse when software vendors and system integrators are whispering in your ear. If you're a, you know, a less sophisticated implementer of technology. You get software vendors and system integrators whispering in your, in your ear saying, hey, it's fine. We've got best practices. We've got a great implementation methodology. We've got the best people. You don't need to worry about that whole planning thing. You don't need to worry about change management. Our software is easy to use, blah, blah, blah. So you, you know, you, you start hearing all this stuff and I, I kind of understand in some cases where, to your point, if you don't have that experience level, if you haven't been through. These battle wounds and battle scars in the past, you're not going to know. Um, and it's all just academic, you know, if, 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 uh, you haven't been through it before in some cases. So, um, anyway, but this is really good stuff and we could easily spend another hour or ten on this topic. But we'll, we'll, we'll wrap it up for now and I'd love to have you back and maybe build on some of this some more. By then, in a few months, we have you back. We'll have some more failures to talk about too, unfortunately or fortunately. Gives us good content, which is good news. Um, but anyway, but thank you for being here. Really appreciate it, Scott.
You bet. No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to the audience. Thanks for the great questions. Again, uh, keep an eye out at transformationgroundcontrol.com. For this episode to drop in two weeks, it'll be two weeks from Wednesday. Every Wednesday we put out new episodes, this one will get edited, we'll add some additional content to it. And we'll release it as a formal episode of that podcast on all the podcast platforms like Google Podcast, um, Spotify, Apple Podcast, all that stuff. As well as on YouTube, LinkedIn, uh, Twitter, TikTok, Facebook, uh, et cetera. So be sure to check it out, transformationgroundcontrol.com. Uh, thank you for being here. We'll be back next week with, um, I believe Jan Bon is next week, um, who's the founder of Bond Software. Um, I'm not, I, actually while we're still here, before I wrap up, I just want to make sure I'm right on that. I believe it is Jan Bon. Um, and he founded Bond Software and he's big into the microservices composable ERP world now. And so we're going to talk about composable ERP next week, which will be a really interesting topic. And if you don't know Jan Bon, he's a legend and a pioneer in this industry, so be sure to join us next week. Same time, same place, wherever you're watching here today, we'll be back at the same time next week with Jan Bon. And, uh, keep an eye out, transformationgroundcontrol.com. Hope you have a great week in the meantime and we'll see you, see you next time. Thank you and take care.